Hello, all right. It's six o'clock. Our clock is wrong back there. It's a little bit slow, so I want to call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission Thursday, December the 3rd at 6:00 p.m. And I'll ask Commissioner Cal Allen to give the prayer and then we'll say the pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
Our God and Father, we're so thankful that we have this time to come together tonight to discuss these things that are of importance to all the citizens of this city. We thank you for preservation of what we have here. We hope that we can continue to walk in peace and in faithfulness before you. We ask you also to be with the leaders of our country, Father, in difficult times. We have confidence that you sit on the throne whosoever you will, and we will trust you to lead and guide us and guide our nation back into faithfulness. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the order is approval of the minutes, the November 5th minutes. May I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Well, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey, a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? All approved. Any opposed? Okay, so motion passed.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Can we add the confirmation?
Yes. We need to amend the...
A resolution.
Yeah. Thank you. We need to amend the agenda and under the city clerk's staff report, we're going to have a public hearing on a resolution, on a joint participation resolution, and that will be directly under the staff report. So, do we need a motion to amend the... Okay, so may I have a motion to amend the agenda, please?
I'll make the motion to amend.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. That's a motion by Commissioner Massey, a motion by Commissioner Mathis. Any discussion? All approved?
None.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passed. Now we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have public comment or anyone like to speak about our Holiday in the Harbor or something like that? Okey-dokey. Come forward. And turn on the microphone and tell us your name, please.
I'm Skip Frank. In spite of the fact that you see a full sheet of paper in front of me, don't worry. I just got back into town, so sorry about that. The important thing is where the boat parade of lights in Holiday in the Harbor is concerned, a bit of a change, but we want to make sure that it's public, you know, and known, et cetera. On Friday, the day before Saturday, obviously, Marine Street and Avenue B, those two city blocks there, will be closed at 2:00 in the afternoon, so the tents and all that sort of thing can be put together. They won't be blocking the middle of the street on Friday, but the assembly will get started at that point. Other than that, is there anything major that's changed in the last month?
Remind them of the times.
Thank you, Mr. Tamra. The times. Well, of course, Saturday, December the 12th, 8 to 10 vendors check in, and then 10 until 9:00 at night is the official, you know, total time. And there will be a number of activities going on at different times, you know, during, you know, those hours. Vendors may or may not decide to stay that entire amount of time. Okay? Anything else that...
Is it gonna be all nonprofit vendors this year?
No, ma'am.
Okay. It's just gonna be...
Well, actually, you know, the day before is when we find out exactly who all the vendors are gonna be, so I can't answer that. But we will have, I know we've got nonprofits and...
But it's open to others?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Now, there's a tremendous, it's not a penalty, but an extra charge for vendors for profit. It's $5. $5 extra if they're a profit organization. Anybody have any questions?
Skip, the point of this is to develop and get more people in the circulation of the downtown area, the business district.
Exactly.
I don't know if you mentioned that?
I had mentioned it last month. I was trying to keep from being repetitious, but that is absolutely the idea. Besides the fact that we may have some construction going on further up Marine Street, we CRA, merchants in the area, you know, we're trying to develop the core downtown area, you know, as best we can, because we feel that'll really be best for Carabelle in the future. What, Noah?
Santa Claus is coming on our truck.
And Santa Claus is coming also.
On a fire truck, you said?
Fire truck.
All right. And what time will he arrive on a fire...
At noon.
At noon. Okay. Very well. Thank you, Mr. Frank.
So it's gonna be all day or later?
Okay. 10 till 9. Somewhere around there. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Is there any more public comment? Any more public comment? Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Walden, do you have a report, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have one here from Chief Hunter. He had 78 dispatches, he had eight alarm calls, six animal calls, two arrests, one felony, one misdemeanor. Assistant agencies, five, Frank County Sheriff Department. He had EMS, he assisted five times, had three batteries, one burglary, 13 citizens assist, divestments, five, disturbance calls, seven, intoxication persons, three, unlocked vehicles, nine. He had four of his officers trained for table trading, for armed qualifications for three officers, five traffic stops, three traffic citations, two crashes. Revenue from a citation, 134. He had 55 of the businesses, we go out with security cards.
He did 55.
Yeah. So, doing a good job, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I did get a call and I reported it to our city administrator that some four-wheeling was going on up in the backside of the cemetery, and so I think we kind of asked the chief to have some patrol going on the weekends, maybe a couple of times a night on the weekends just to check on that.
I think he's already dressed, isn't he?
Yeah, they're digging it up back there. We can't have that. Okay. Commissioner Mathis?
I have one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Massey?
No, I didn't get with the chief of Fire Department Carl Wiley, but I'll get one for last month and this one.
Okay. Thank you so much. And Commissioner Allen?
Just one thing. I think some of you noticed that I've got a little more stature up here now, and our attorney is a little lower down the list now. We swapped chairs. I appreciate that. That's all.
My goodness. Okay, thank you.
Just a little entertainment.
All right. Well, I have a little bit of a report, not the tremendous long one like I had before, just a half-page. But I want to start out with something nice first, and on behalf of the city commission and the city staff, I want to thank Mr. Leon Wisner for his dedication and hard work on maintaining the Carabelle clock tower. He's keeping it operational and on time every day. Leon volunteers his time making sure that each intricate part of the clock tower functions properly, and he's described that before. It's not that any ordinary person can't do it. He actually had to study on that and order the manuals and learn how to operate that clock. Now, he's recently programmed the clock to play about 100 popular tunes on the hour or on the half-hour. I don't know, Courtney, is it playing on the hour or the half-hour? How's it playing at?
It's playing all the time.
Oh, solid. Oh, my goodness. All right, so we're thanking him for it playing solid, but he'll get it worked out. The tunes is new. That's a new addition. And it's supposed to be programmed to chime between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And no later because of its close proximity to residential housing. And so I just want to extend my appreciation to him for volunteering his efforts and making our community a hometown we're proud to be a part of. And I just want to also ask the city administrator if she'd send him a thank you letter and Merry Christmas to Mr. and Mrs. Wisner. We appreciate their efforts in the community. I just want to let everyone know I'll be attending the first meeting of the new Streamline Restore Act Council on December, I believe it's the 15th, but it may be the 16th. I haven't received the confirmation yet. This is just going to be an orientation-style meeting with introduction to the Drew Barry consultants who will assist with the board members with the development of the multi-year implementation plan. And then Courtney and I have completed the city vehicle inventory that I mentioned last month, including VIN numbers, mileage, tags, tag numbers, and photos. And while we were at the Streets and Roads staging yard recording the vehicles there, we just went ahead and began an inventory on the mobile equipment, like trailers and tractors and such. And this part of the inventory, we're gonna complete that part of the inventory by recording the water and sewer department's mobile equipment in December. Now, photo documentation, spreadsheets, I've already prepared those. I took the photos and spreadsheets of each of the equipment's vehicles' data are gonna be prepared for each department. And then the first of the year, staff is gonna begin a new policy where each driver will place his or her vehicle number on every fueling receipt every time they get gas with their signature, and then the department heads are gonna report the mileage on each of the vehicles in their department to the finance clerk each month. And the finance clerk is gonna prepare a spreadsheet that's going to, a running spreadsheet that's gonna help us get an idea of fuel usage per vehicle and exactly what kind of mileage is going on the vehicles. So I just wanted to follow up on that with you. And it will take, you know, six to eight months to kind of see what kind of patterns, what vehicles are using too much gasoline or, you know, just, you know, and this is one of the items that was on our financial statement, that we need to start keeping a good fuel inventory. So we're gonna work on that. And I'm also happy to report that our new city website has undergone some recent updates and revisions. Now it's including the city budget, the current budget, has the meeting minutes on there, some important documents, and links to important organizations throughout the county. There's several links, maybe 15 links on there. So if you have a question or a comment, you can click on the blue contact button on the right top of the homepage, and this will take you to a direct link where you can easily email your request or your comments. And then we're gonna add some future additions to the site, including information about the Carabelle Thompson Airport. And speaking of the airport, I, this was not, I had not intended to talk about this tonight, but I received a call this afternoon, late this afternoon, from Mr. Nobles. I guess his title is the airport manager, and he wanted me to sign a check. And so I came on up here to sign the check and I asked the, it was a check for $1,300. I asked the city finance clerk, does Mr. Nobles present an invoice? He's a subcontractor. Does he present an invoice each month when he requests a check? And no, he does not present an invoice. And I want him to start presenting an invoice for his payments. He needs to present an invoice with his business name on it. He is a subcontractor. All of our other subcontractors do that. And all of our vendors and subcontractors receive payment basically on the same day or days of each month. Keith and myself and Cal sign the checks, and we come in on Mondays and sign the checks. Every now and then there's an emergency or something, and we can get together. If one of us can't sign, then we rotate out. That's why we have so many. But for someone to just come in and order up, you know, a payment on an odd day is odd. So we want the airport manager to receive his payment on the same day as the other vendors, and I would like to see the agreement between the city and the airport manager. The agreement that was, I don't even know when the airport manager came on duty, maybe with the city, maybe it was in 2010. I have no idea. I want to see that agreement. I want to see the minutes where he was approved as airport manager or fixed base operator, whatever that was, whatever the agreement is. I'd like to see that and the minutes where he was approved. I want to see the list of expected duties that go along with this service at the airport, something in there that may include what are the hours of expected service for this $1,300 a month, or, you know, how many hours is he expected to be at the airport per week or month?
Is that how much we pay you a month?
Yes.
$1,300 every month?
Yes. But now, Mr. Nobles mentioned to me today, when I asked, you know, do you present an invoice, he mentioned to me that he was, I believe he said, 20 months behind in the rears, behind in payment. So that's $26,000. And this needs to be remedied. We need to see his agreement. We need to see why, you know, is the city liable for this? Is this liability put on the financial statement? So this needs to be handled, you know, quickly. And I want to, you know, I'm ready to give...
Did we give him a check today?
Yes, he received a check today. I wasn't prepared, you know, to handle it. Actually, he called me and he wanted to come by my house and have me sign a check, you know, it just caught me off guard. I had, you know, I had no idea. And I said, "No, I'll come up there, up to City Hall."
So, I don't understand.
I don't understand either. So, you know, I'm ready to see what's going on and move forward with it.
People got a problem.
It was January 7th, 2010. Oh, January 7th, 2010. Okay, thank you. That was the minutes from that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And they agreed to pay $1,300 a month?
The motion was for $15,900 a year, paid out of hangar rent for maintenance and something to pumps and handling the rent and our hangars. And that was a motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Allen on January 7th, 2010.
Did you, was it, does it talk about, okay, 15, 9 annually?
Yes.
Okay. And that's all, that's all you have right at your hands right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You just, you know, give me that information tomorrow or something.
So he hasn't been paid?
He said, he said he hadn't been paid in 20 months. He was 20 months in the rears.
That's almost two years. So why hasn't, why hasn't anybody wanted, why hasn't he done what he's made?
I think the airport wasn't selling any gas, any fuel, and it wasn't really making any money, so he just said that he wouldn't request pay.
And now he's requesting 20 months of pay?
No, he has, he did not do that.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we'll move forward. I just want, you know, I need to bring that to your attention because we'll be addressing So, staff reports. Mr. Large, thank you.
All right, thank you. Just to update you on projects we're working on for the city. On the Avenue B resurfacing project, the final striping, actually will be going down this coming week. So we'll make sure we coordinate that with the contractor and make sure they're done and out of the way in time for the parade activities on Friday. We also are working on a city road paving project. We expect to have that design completed before Christmas, and of course, we'll coordinate with the county for that resurfacing work to be done. We have a grant application that has been submitted. This is for the replacement of well number three. We're still waiting for notification of award at this time. Also, there's a CDBG grant cycle upcoming, and applications would be due March 2016. I noticed that there is a selection or actually appointing of a Citizens Advisory Task Force, CATF, which is only adjourned for tonight. It's the first step in that process. There's also a FERDAP grant for Sands Park, Phases II and III that we're working on. Those improvements include an asphalt, multi-use path around the pond, fishing pier, new bathroom, and playground and picnic areas. Lastly, we have a task order for Fifth Avenue depression evaluation. That's the ponding there that you see on Fifth Avenue just north of Williams Medical Center. So we'll be submitting and coordinating that with Courtney. That'll be done in two steps. First step will be an evaluation, which will include a geotechnical work, and then the second phase would be to implement plans, preparation, and design for improvements. Also, there is a sign violation that we will address with the Department of Transportation, and that needs to be done by the 10th of December, so we'll make sure that occurs tomorrow.
Okay, I have a few questions. The signed violation, is that the one out here at Sands Park?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
On the Fifth Street, Fifth Street, task order.
Yes.
We're going to be meeting, Courtney and I, with the, a couple of the homeowners from the homeowners association, actually the president, on the 12th, excuse me, on the 10th, December the 10th. If you might have some kind of a guesstimate on what the...
I will.
Okay. What the task order's gonna cost.
Okay.
All right. And then the paving on the city streets now, not Southwest Avenue B, but all the rest of the city streets.
Right.
We're gonna need a place to put the milled asphalt. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And, all right. And then they're closing Avenue B southeast for your striping at 2:00 on Friday.
Right. And so we'll be done for after that. I'll make sure we coordinate that and that it's done.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Large?
Thank you.
There's a question in the audience.
Okay. Mr. Butler has a question. Thank you.
David Butler of the Camp Gordon-Johnson Association. When we lost our historical signs to guide the public to our old site where the historical society museum is now, I talked to DOT about we getting those brown signs again. After all that discussion, it came back to the city already has a permit to have a sign at Fifth Street, and they're using that sign approval as why we can't get the brown historical sign put up. So I don't know why we're being restricted to...
We don't have a permit yet.
Again, I...
That's why we keep getting that letter.
I will go back and, he sent me emails. They took pictures of it. I'll go pull that back off my computer and I'll send it to another. But I ran into that issue when I was trying to say, you know, "I don't want to move the signs. The history museum needs it." But we have, you know, we have another museum that the public needs to know to turn on Fifth or 12th Street.
Are you wanting a brown historical sign?
That's what I was trying to do. And I was told that you can't get one because there's already a sign, there's already a permitted sign there at Fifth Street. They took pictures of it and said, "You got Camp Gordon-Johnson along the bottom of it," and da-da-da-da. So one part of DOT is telling me I can't get something, and another part's telling you, you're in trouble. It could be you're in trouble for the size of it, maybe. But anyway, I just want to work with them and see if we might be able to get those brown signs. People look for those historical things.
Now, you know that they're, when you were there, you know they're ready to break ground just about there at the new location. So you would want to have a historical sign put here at Fifth Street and then move it within a year?
Well, we hope we build one there. And we hope you find a new home, but until then, if you have the signs, you can get DOT to move it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what big deal it's about a little brown sign that's gonna be in the right of way, but of course, we know DOT is very specific about it. So, I mean, I'll provide you with...
We'll work with you on that. Okay. Thank you all. And then Ms. Tamra with Waterfront Partnership, please. Thank you.
I was just thinking how thankful I am that the Camp Gordon-Johnson is not gonna take my brown signs that are now pointing to my museum, because we get so many people stopping from those brown signs that are just driving down the road, see that sign and say, "Well, it's time for a break." So it's a big asset to us, and we appreciate having them there. I actually do not have a written report for you. I will send it around as soon as I get access to a computer and printer that work. And, but I did want to just give you the highlights of what we have accomplished and what we have undergoing along the year. Pretty much all of our projects are on track with our brown field grant and our various activities that we've been doing along the way. We have finally pulled together the funding to remove the boat that's upside down in the middle of the river. We finally managed to get, with a donation, the Waterfront Partnership. Let's see, let's see how that worked. Anyway, Carabelle Cures has an environmental fund, which just has a few hundred dollars in it, but we've used that money over time to do cleanups. But we are going to donate some money from that fund in order to complete the funds needed to get that ship, the boat, out of the middle of the river, 'cause not only is it a hazard, but it's ugly and it is a hazard, and I think it just needs to go, and so we thought it was a good cause to use some of that money since it's...
Do they know whose boat that is?
I've been told that it belongs to Jim Lemon, but I don't, there seems to be some doubt about that. But his name is on the paperwork that I've seen.
His name would have to pay to move the boat.
Well, I know that...
Mr. Rob Powis has been working on this probably for about a year, and he's actually coordinating it behind the scenes. You know him. He sits on our CRA board. He's worked with the attorney and with Courtney and with FWC, Mr. Wood, and he's managing it through the Waterfront Partnership, so it's pretty much laid out.
Right.
And we're just holding on right now, waiting on Mr. Lemon's signature to authorize the boat to be removed, but he's out of town right now. So as soon as he gets back, he's got it set up, and I believe even Commissioner Massey there, County Commissioner Massey's gonna, is coordinating with Mr. Powis also to get the boat to the landfill, so that's a good thing.
Hopefully, it'll happen early in the year. We think that several of our own projects will come, will be done in January, and I think it'll be a good time to start out with some good things that we are gonna have to accomplish. We have been studying the recommendations from the historical survey and recommendations in that book that the city had done in 2009. There's an entire chapter on historic preservation in Carabelle, in the city of Carabelle, identifying some possible districts that might be something to look at, and we're exploring how other cities our size have done something similar, how they've done GIS overlay from the various historical properties onto the flood map. And I honestly don't understand enough about what a GIS map looks like. Well, I mean, obviously, it looks like... Well, I mean, obviously it looks like dots on a map, but still, how you take the flood map and overlay the city map and put the properties on it so that you all will have a better understanding of those historic properties that are owned by both the city and the public here in the area. A lot of them are in the downtown area, which of course we know is in the flood zone. So we're working on that project as well as continuing to work on the plan for McKissin Beach. And things are going slow, but they're making little bitty steps forward. So we're hopeful that that's gonna work out good. And we're excited about the new things happening for the holiday on the harbor. I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for, to get people in the downtown shopping area and to give everyone an opportunity to spend some time at our businesses and also enjoy a great boat parade. It's gonna be bigger, more boats than we've had in quite a while, so that's terrific. And just on a personal note, I want to say that I personally had an opportunity to call on the police this week for some help with the problem. And I just want to say that Officer Gene Anderson, right? Am I right on the name? He came and he was absolutely wonderful. He was very helpful with our problem and helped guide me through the process. And I was very impressed with his maturity and also his thoroughness. So we spent a lot of time together last week. So I just wanted to say that it's not often that you can have a chance to tell the commission that, but I was very impressed with his work last week. And I think we, I think we made some good choices. And I would like to wish you all a happy holiday and I will, and Merry Christmas particularly. And I'll give you more report next month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tamlin. Mr. Butler with EDC, okay, has no report. Mr. Hartman?
Yes, I have one item. We have a tentatively scheduled mediation in the Potteek versus City of Carabelle case. And I would ask that the city commission designate, it can be city officials or elected officials, but only one elected official to attend the mediation on January 27th, next month. And the way that would work generally is simply mediation is just a confidential opportunity to explore potential settlement of that case. However, we cannot, and it'll be explained both to mediator and opposing counsel, I've already explained it to them, any settlement reached, when I say reached, any settlement terms that are thought to be acceptable to the city still require city approval. So they have to come back before the commission, the commission votes on it, up or down on whether the city is in fact agreeing to settle on those terms if a settlement proposal is, you know, comes out of that mediation. So, but it would be helpful to have obviously not just a lawyer, but whether it be an elected official and city administrator or, I think city administrator would be the person to accompany me, but also an elected official if there's desire on any of the, anyone who'd like to attend mediation.
So I'll leave that. It's a pleasure of the board. If anyone, does anyone want to attend? Is anyone interested?
And did...
Now, Ms. Courtney can go.
Absolutely, absolutely. We just can't have more than one commissioner.
She would be key to go. But yes, yes, more than one from this board can have a constituted meeting.
I would be glad to share a moment.
And then you'll be able to report back to us as well as Courtney. And that's on January the 27th. Do we need a motion for that?
Please, just designate.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please, to...
I have a motion for Commissioner Allen to attend the mediation on January the 27th.
Okay. And do we need a second? A second, please?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Walden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
And Commissioner Allen, I'll get you time and location so we can organize.
Very good.
Ms. Courtney, do you have anything to report?
I just wanted to announce that the Franklin County Emergency Management Office will be doing our points of distribution training here on December 14th at 1:00. And also that our CRA is having a special workshop on February the 16th to discuss the Georgian motel property and moving the phone booth. So that's gonna be February 16th at 6:00. That's all we have.
And that's to move the small police station. And we're trying to get that advertised. That will be advertised two weeks in advance in the newspaper and on Facebook and such. We want folks to come out in public hearing today.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since we mentioned the city and county commission, they're to meet here, they're regular, they're over now and then, they meet here in this building for their regular monthly meeting. And that'll be on the 15th, is that right?
Yes.
William. Where, William, 15th here, 10:00?
Yes.
Okay. So if you want to have a chance to see the county operation, it'd be a good time to be here.
Anything else, Courtney?
I don't have...
Okay, thank you. Ms. Keisha, do you have anything for us?
No.
Okay. I don't have you on the agenda, but Chief Hinnings, do you have anything?
Oh, no.
Thank you, sir. All right, then, we're gonna move on to the public hearing here that we amended the agenda for, the resolution. It's Resolution 072015, authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute a joint position, joint participation agreement with FDOT for funding to relocate the fuel tank at the airport. So would you want to read that resolution, Mr. Hinnings?
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
City of Carabelle Resolution 07-2015, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% grant funding to relocate fuel facility at the Carabelle-Thompson Airport. Whereas the city of Carabelle needs 100% grant funding to relocate fuel facility at the Carabelle-Thompson Airport. And whereas the Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the FDOT to provide 100% of the funding to make these needed improvements to the Carabelle-Thompson Airport. Now therefore be it resolved by the city commission of the City of Carabelle, Florida, assembled in regular meeting on December 3rd, 2015, that the city administrator be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as follows. Florida Department of Transportation, participation 100% in the amount of $90,000. The City of Carabelle, participation in the amount of no dollars. Total project cost for the relocation of the fuel farm at the airport, $90,000. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the joint participation agreement between the City of Carabelle and the Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed, adopted by the City, by the Carabelle City Commission on this third day of December 2015.
Okay, then, I have a few questions for the administrator who will be overseeing this. When can this relocation begin?
We have the plans and specs in. We're waiting until after the holidays, but it should be first of the year.
Okay.
We'll put it out.
And URS engineering will be overseeing it?
Yes.
This particular work? Okay. And then are, who are the engineers of record for the airport?
URS is the engineer of record on this project, but Jacob Jacks is gonna be the engineer for all of the upcoming projects we have.
Okay. So is, this relocation can begin as soon as you're, as, at the first of the year, once the bids are in?
Yes.
And then, but I see that this grant and the paperwork that came with it is, has to be completed, the work has to be completed by June 2018. So we'll have plenty of time to do that. Okay, so...
I could speak to it a little bit. One of the reasons why the fuel tank has to be relocated, it's down amongst the hangars and in the middle of them. And it's a fire hazard if there should be a spill. Plus the fact that we need more hangar space. And so by moving that over to the other side of the taxi runway, they'll have more room for the hangars and it'll put the tank outside of the area. So the planes will not have to go down in amongst the hangars to fill up. They can do it outside the hangar area. It's a safety issue.
That's right. And they won't have to, some planes are tied down there sometimes. They won't have to taxi by those planes that are tied down. Safety issues, you say. So can I get a motion then to approve this resolution?
I don't have the motion to approve.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Cal Allen. Is there any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then motion carries. Thank you. Okay, on all business, we're going to move forward now to item one, discussion and possible action concerning the GUSC lease amendment. I believe I saw Mr. McCormick come in. We've had some communications back and forth with the attorney. Everyone, did everyone see the recommended lease amendment for the five acres? Did everyone see the paperwork that Mr. Hartman has sent out? And then there was some counter offer from GUSC that was sent out this morning, just short notice. Did everyone see that?
I can, I can just summarize that. It's very straightforward. What we had talked about at the last meeting was a lease amendment, sure, Mr. McCormick can explain it, I'm sure, in more detail, but that what GUSC wants to do is add to their lease five acres adjacent to the existing property for purposes of a test track facility for unmanned vehicles, ground and, I think it's ground, ground, I think ground primarily. So they wanted to, again, lease that additional area. I was directed to draft a, just do a draft, second lease amendment. And again, pretty straightforward, the lease amendment. What it, the draft provided for was to expand to include the five acres that's adjacent. It would leave us still with 10 acres, you know, roughly rectangular section, primarily uplands, but it would be on this five acres. And the proposed in the draft that I prepared was for, providing for a one-year ramp-up period under which there would not be any payment of rent. But then after that one year, there would be a hundred dollars a month per acre paid for a total of $500. It would increase at 3% a year. The term of the lease, it had an initial term and then renewals, but actually the most simple way to look at it is it would mirror the existing lease they had. So it would extend through the, with renewals, it would extend through the entire lease term that they have on the existing site. So approximately 50 years. And termination, we talked about that a little bit, as far as if, would basically be at either parties, either party can terminate with 120 days' notice and... And then basically that's it. What the GUSC folks have come back with, just in reviewing that, is they had asked for essentially a, whether it be a one-year, basically a one-year period from the grace period to start from when they break ground. So, because I know they're trying to acquire funding, as I was explaining to me, they're trying to acquire grant funding in order to break ground. So instead of from the date of signing, it would be one year from the date of breaking ground. Second change was instead of a hundred dollars per acre per month, $65 per acre per month. And basically also whether or not, well, from the 3% annual increase to a 1.5% annual increase, and a question on what year that increase would start in. Otherwise, otherwise I believe we were in agreement on the rest of these terms. So again, it was, the direction to me was to bring this lease amendment to you all at this meeting for discussion. Gussie's here to discuss it as well. And if we can reach terms, then I'll make any revisions and we can get it incorporated into the draft that I've made. Any questions?
Now, if we lease the land to him, we gotta, if we need that land back, we can give them notice in 120 days and then we get it back. You don't give the lease for 50 years, right?
Correct. Either party can say, hey, 120-day notice and the property...
And it was, our initial was a hundred dollars a month per acre, so that's $500 a month for five acres of land. That's cheap.
It is cheap. And they counter offered back $65 an acre, which is $325 a month. And that, that 3% annual increase in 20, at $325 a month, at a 3% annual increase in 20 years, and that's, this is compounded now, that's only $590 a month. That, I mean, this, y'all are, you know, this is supposed to be a business, you know? You're talking about a huge business here that's gonna be operating in this area of Florida. And it's like you're, I don't know, you know, how to say this. I mean, we have, we have for-profits and nonprofits right now that pay the city rent for space. We have a nonprofit right here in this building that's paying 450, I believe, $450 a month for rent and it's increasing at 3%.
3%.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, we would expect the same thing from GUSC along those same terms. And then in here I see Ms. Peterson, for some reason, I think she thinks that the rent would begin in year 11. No, the rent, now when y'all were here last, Mr. Milliken said last month that the track would be completed in two years. And I would expect the rent payments to start no less than in two years when you all start leasing that track out. I mean, you're coming to us saying, you came to us, we're not advertising that land for lease. Y'all came to us and said you want to lease the land, you have opportunity to use it, you have people knocking on your door, FSU's knocking on your door. Evidently, they're going to be paying. And all of the other folks that pay, for-profit businesses, the hair cutting store, the post office that lease city property, pay, pay rent. And I am saying that only to be fair to the rest of these folks that pay rent, that, you know, we expect the same thing from GUSC. I don't understand why the amount is, why they're, you know, undercutting the amount and undercutting the amount for years to come and not expecting to pay for 11 years from now.
Yeah, I think the, sorry, the 11 years was the, was the increase, the 3%. The delay in making payments was during the ramp-up period. So they were not, I don't think there was any issue on when the monthly payments would start, whether it was, what they were talking about there is the amount and when it would start, whether it be from signing of the lease, lease amendment, or the break ground.
Well, I'm like, I'm like the mayor. We're, he's leasing the land. If he starts using it tomorrow, I mean, he should, they should start paying. They're not even nonprofit. They're for profit. We have people, they started paying rent on Camp Gordon-Johnson when they first went in there. And they've had a lot of work to do. And they're nonprofit. And these are for profit. I mean, we shouldn't wait two years to get any money off of something we're renting out. It's not fair. It's not fair to the ones that rents from us and other places. When we rent it out, when we sign the lease agreement, then we expect payment. Not in a few years.
Do you have any idea what the income would be from the subleasing it to the track people?
Well, what, no, actually I don't. Because we're doing this for, actually, we're before you... before you, and thank you for allowing us to do this, and thank you for your prompt action on this. And quite honestly, since I am the CEO and the founder of this business, I'm going to forego that, that $65 and we're gonna go back to the original, because I like that, I, I felt that was fine anyway. So I just wanted to make sure that when we started the payment, that we had to have, you know, we had to have this thing under construction. And FSU, who y'all allowed us to do this, is, is going out and fighting the money right now to develop it. So we don't want to be developing, paying for something that's not developed. And that's, that's what, that's what this is all about. So as far as I'm concerned, I can make the decision right now and we're back to the original. But I just wanted, we did want to clear up that the, that this doesn't start after we start the construction of this track. I spoke to Dr. Manuel, he was a fellow that was here that's heading this up, and we all, actually, we were representing Carabelle at a fairly large function in Tallahassee this past week, on Tuesday, called the Discovery Function. And he was there representing Cisco and Florida State for the A&amp;M Engineering School. And he was, he was telling the sort of folks what we're doing down here in Carabelle. So he's very happy about this. I, that, you know, he's paying us to pay you, is what that, what that amounts to, so.
Is your microphone turned on in this conference?
It is.
Yes.
Is it now?
No, it was, oh, it was, it seemed like some folks are having a hard time hearing. Put it close to your chin.
I think I had a cold, so maybe that's what happened. But I, but anyway, usually I don't have any trouble having, having people here to be particularly. Yeah. But anyway, I, I'm gonna, we'll go back to that, the thought of mine. I appreciate, you know, what, what you've done, Mayor, and the commissioners have done, and the staff, and just been very expedited this, and I really enjoy that. We'll go back to, you know, Dr. Collins, Dr. Manuel Collins, and he's gonna be fine with it. So we'd just like to get, make this thing go forward and get all of y'all's signatures.
We, we need to figure out when to, to begin this rent.
No, he's not nonprofit, he's for-profit. So I think whenever he signs, they sign the lease, then they should start paying rent. I mean, that's like anywhere else you would go.
Now, we did, we did offer, in, in Mr. Hartman's suggestions, to begin in one year from the date of the signing of the lease, to begin rent, I guess to, I'm assuming to allow construction.
There was a ramp-up period, we provided for that in the original lease, and then I wanna say we did have discussion about it, and, but it is up to the board.
Their, their language is a ramp-up period?
Yeah.
And we are, you know, they're doing the engineering on it right now because it's a, actually, it's a very specific little piece of land that's adjoining to the land that we, you know, that we leased, that Gulf Unmanned Systems Center.
It's five acres.
Five, yes ma'am, it's five acres, but most of it is wetland. So we have to engineer around that, the wetland part of the property.
That's fine. So you're not gonna use it, there's not gonna be, there's nothing gonna be on it for one year?
It's gonna, it's gonna stay right until they start building on it within a year, and that's when they will start paying, that's what I, that's what we had taken away from this period.
It's one year? So you don't, you don't think y'all get it ready within a year or nothing like that?
Actually, it doesn't have anything to do with Gulf Unmanned Systems Center, we're the front people for this. Florida State University is bringing the cash to the table to submit, to build the, uh, build this course.
And it'll be, how long do you think that'll be?
Well, we told you, in a year.
I mean, so what if it's four months from now?
Well, if it's four months from now, what we'll do is we'll start paying, I mean, we're not, we're not here to, we're not here to document anybody.
Oh, I know that, I'm just saying, the lease is one year.
Yeah, exactly. If, you know, once we tax that, we want to get something done, I mean, there ain't no way out without finding grant money to build this course, which is gonna be a multimillion-dollar course, I can tell you that much. And it's going to attract a lot of folks here in Carabelle, once this gets up. But we have priority for FSU to go through there or the others.
Let, let me propose this, then, there's, there's that one year from breaking ground or completion of the construction of the test track, whichever is earlier, they have to start paying. So if they get done with the test track in three months, they, they get the money, get, begin construction.
Which, that sounds good, that sounds good, thank you.
We don't have.
How does that sound to you, Commissioner Allen?
That sounds good to me, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Walden. Commissioner Massey.
You hear that, it's rather loud.
I just don't want that piece of land to get, like, the piece of land that he's already, the film he's already owned was like that when we got in here. That somebody else owned it.
Right, no, this one, we, we do have the...
The green steel building, yeah.
Yeah, we won't run in, we should not run, no, no, always never, you absolutely, we won't run into that.
I mean, yeah, the thing about, the thing about that piece of land, we can put a track on there because it's, it's, it's kind of a natural track, I mean, I'd have to show you the, the demonstration on it, but it's not like there's gonna be a building put on it.
Oh, it doesn't matter, I, I wouldn't, I knew what was going on there. I just wanna get everything straight, so we don't end up like we were before. You know, we're, we're, we just let somebody have something, and they're using it, and they're there, and the city's not making nothing off of it.
I, I want to make sure then, on, on the FSU issue, and Mr. McCormick has clearly stated here that it's, it's FSU that Gulf Unmanned Systems Center is acting as the front man. Will FSU have any kind of a claim on this in the future?
They will not.
Okay.
They, they, now, if Gulf Unmanned Systems said, hey, we wanna sublease this property to them, then it's subject to the sublease terms of the lease that we've already signed, which is subject to our approval. So we would, we would...
So then, we're also then negotiating on the percentage of increase in rent payment per year and when that percentage will begin. Now, what, what does Camp Gordon Johnston pay? Do we know that on hand? Are there increase?
Bruce, actually, let me ask this question, now that I think about it.
Usually when you're doing calls to, you know, what I've always done in the past, it's usually a three to four-year period, and then you're putting a cost of living adjustment. So how you wanna do that, that's gonna be up to you all, the attorney force. But that's, that's normally, actually, the FBI in Blountstown, and that's how, that's what we, that's how we handle that as well.
What is the rest of them? Is it 3% every year? Okay, then that's what this one, if they wanna, if they're the board to vote on it. It's not right to have nonprofit paying 3% every year and then a for-profit, we're waiting three or four years to pay.
Just what I've done in the past.
So do we need to vote on that?
What I will do is prepare a revised draft, and we'll go over there and vote on it. And I'll, of course, get it right over to them, obviously, we'll get everybody looking at it again, make sure it's, we're all on the same page, and then that'll...
Do we want, are we interested in their, the 3% increasing, the rent increasing 3% the very first year or the second year?
And she said it does on everybody else.
And Camp Gordon Johnston. And what do the other commissioners feel about that?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, okay, so we don't have to, you know, have to come back and try to renegotiate again and then put it off another month. Now, I want to discuss the survey, Ms. Maria Peterson brought it up in her email, that they've won a survey, and I mentioned that to Mr. Hartman, and he said that we had a very detailed survey of the property and that a description could be drawn up here.
Yeah, I would, when I say that, what I'm, I'm saying, we've had, was it Thurman or Edwin? So Thurman, Edwin, so Edwin Brown did the original survey, surveyed all 20 acres, and what, what they can do is we can simply tell him, hey, we want a legal description of the five, approximately five-acre piece, they'll do it right in the office. They, they don't need to come back out in the field, they've already done all the field work, so.
So at that point, you know, that they were requesting a survey, they came to the city to, to lease the property, it wasn't advertised by the city, I was going to suggest that they pay for the survey.
Right, if, certainly if they have an issue, they're, they're welcome to talk to Mr. Brown, but if they have an issue with the survey, they can go out, they can certainly get their own to verify and if they think it's an issue.
That could be a small cost.
Yeah, and like you say, to them, but the, this Edwin Brown, we can get the job number off the, off of the survey, and literally, it's very simple matter, it's just office work on the cabbie to chop that east out of it.
We can communicate that to Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Before we leave this, I have a question, it might be out of order, I'd like to talk about sometime, but regarding the other leases occurring under, there's a, a full employment issue, would it be appropriate for me to discuss that for just a brief? It's not on the agenda.
I, I would, I would like, I actually have it here as well.
Okay.
Employment. I was going to just remind Mr. McCormick that we're, we're aware of that, but you could, I think it's all right for me. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Allen.
In the term of the lease that you're now under, and I, bear with me while I read it, tenants shall initially create 10 full-time positions, basically to be filled with people from the city, but if not enough qualified, then you take the people from outside. And then the positions shall be filled one month from the effective date of the lease, so you have one month to get to 10, as I understand it. Following the reasonable ramp-up period of one year from the effective date, tenants shall employ an additional 10 employees from Carabelle, or in the absence of qualified, they can take it from somewhere else. Then in year three, tenants shall employ additional 10 employees, so that would be 30. Now, there's a phrase at the end of that, it says by the end of the year, so you would have the end of the year to get the 30 in the third year. But there's, that's unclear in the second year, whether or not that should be at the end of the year, you would have the additional 10, or does it mean you have to have the 10 at the beginning? Because, uh, Mr. Mark said you had 11 now.
We have 11, actually, we have 11 full-time right now, we just brought on a, a very highly-qualified person to hear from Carabelle, so that's given us 12, she's already taken her down. And next month, we'll be bringing out another person to head up on machine shop. What has slowed us down on bringing these additional people on is that we have contracts with the government and actually with the state authority. But unfortunately, with the government, because of the, the resolution, the money is not often made available this year, so we're waiting for next year's money to come aboard, and then they will, then we will be granting up those other eight or nine people to support that government.
How many from Carabelle?
I guess.
How many from Carabelle you have in board?
Oh, gosh. Actually, we only have probably four from Carabelle. Yeah, just probably four, we have, one time, we probably had nine. For various reasons, they've left. We've had predominantly all of our people are from Franklin County. We have got one person from North Color that actually teaches that, teaches our course at TCC and WEI. We just brought in a person from Tampa, very specialized quality assurance person, ISO 9001, quality assurance person, that we can't find, we couldn't find that person in Bay County. So a person that worked with me for a long time, he's on board, buying a house here as a matter of fact, so it sounds like they're just coming in, buying property. So they are gonna be from Carabelle.
The, the point I wanna make though is, it could be argued that you would have to have the extra 10 now, since we're in the second year?
Yes.
Now, let, let me finish my point. And I would suggest that, that we take the phrase by the end of year two, that you have the 10 additional for the second year by the end of year two. And that would, that would mean you would have to the end of the year to get the other 10. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, and, and I would have those people on board if my contracts were fulfilled by the government. I have signed contracts.
Right.
But my signed contracts are only as good as the funding that behind the contract. They're a five-year period of performance, the contract is worth $49 million. So yes, I'll be able to afford 10 more people, hopefully I'll be able to afford 20. That is, but I, I have no control over that.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that we use the phrase by the end of year three to make it by the end of year two, and that would take out the requirement that you have to have the 10 in the second year now.
Yes, sir.
And that would give you a little more time to comply with that and avoid the confusion of it, if, if that could be amended?
Well, I think that Mr. Hartman should have time to review that, and, and we can address that next, next month possibly.
I just, just a point, that when I read the document, that, that jumped out as being that...
Yes, it does say...
It would seem like, since he doesn't have 20 now, that he would be out of compliance.
He is out of compliance, according to the, to the...
To where the document reads. So if we modify that, it would make it, bring it into compliance.
Maybe we don't wanna modify, I don't know, but, and I just wanted to remind, as you have, and then by the, and as it says here, in year three, tenants shall employ an additional 10 employees by the end of year three. And we don't know, now, does that, like you said, the end of the year, is that meaning the end of the calendar year? I've worked on this extensively with Mr. Hartman and Mr. Matthews, and it was our impression that the end of the year was the end of the, after, if they sign the lease...
May 15th.
Yeah, whenever they sign the lease, May 15th.
That's the year of the lease.
Ends the year, yes. One year would be, every year would be, on May 15th would be their, their year. So you're wanting to change it to the end of the calendar year?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, just the end of the, the year three is the operation year based on May 15th to May 15th.
I don't think we should change anything. So I think we should vote on it, I think we should leave the lease just the way we have it. I mean, he's out of compliance, he's out of compliance, what are we gonna do, keep changing the lease every time he goes out of compliance to get him back in?
Well, because there's a background to this.
I think it does.
There is a background to this, and it had to do with green steel. And, and I'm very much concerned about someone misinterpreting this. The green steel contract said that, to get the grant that they needed, they had to have 19 employees in service on the day, and that complied, they got the grant. There was nothing else in that lease that said they had to continue to have 19. But there were those that argued that they had to have 19 from then on. And because they didn't have 19 because of the business downturn, then they cured the lease and put the pressure on Mr. Tony, and things went downhill from there.
Yeah, the city commission let green steel mortgage our property for millions of dollars. So I think that we should...
But anyway, I think...
I think if we have to vote on it, I think we should keep the lease agreement the same way it is now, because if we have to keep changing it to get him back in compliance, we're gonna be doing this a lot.
So you're saying, since he doesn't have 20 now, then you ought to cure the lease?
No, I didn't say that, I just said we should keep changing the lease.
That's what, that's what the document says.
I know what it says, but if we keep doing that, we're gonna be changing the lease all the time to get him in compliance.
I have nothing else on that.
My machine shop is supposed to be showing up on, well, supposed to be showing up within December. We will be putting four new personnel on board at that time. And we're also going to be instructing in that machine shop operations and welding for our specialized type of business. So, and that will, that has nothing to do with my contract with the government or the state, this is actually, we're working, you know, working through this with TCC and WEI to be able to train people in this part of Franklin County that nobody wants to go to, Pensacola or Panama City to get additional training. Pensacola or Panama City to get additional training, so we're doing our part to do that. And our, our, our average salary a year for our employees that we've had is about fifty-five thousand dollars plus medical for a paid, paid time off, so it's, it's, it's been very successful for, for the employees, I can say for sure.
And we appreciate you being here, and I don't want, and I want to say that you're doing a good job out there, I would just like to avoid a conflict that could come up later, and if, Dan, if you could, our attorney, if you could look at that and see if we might be able to clarify that language a little bit, I would, I would just suggest that you do that.
Let's let Mr. Hartman take a look at it and see, but we, we want, I think all of us may agree here that we want, we want you to move forward with what you agreed to in the original lease agreement with ten employees the first year, basically, ten employees the second year, and basically, this says here by the end of year three, another ten employees, so, and I just had that in my notes, just to remind you, you know, that I'm, I'm keeping an eyeball on it, and we do appreciate you being here, it's, you know, you're in addition to our economy, I'm excited about the potential of having advanced technology business right here in Carabelle, but I'm excited for, and anxious for GUSC to get down to the serious business that you all came to us with in the first place, and maintenance and manufacturing, research, and, and, and training, and unmanned vehicles.
Well, as I said, manufacturing, because we just, I don't know if y'all know this or not, but we just delivered our first unmanned surface vessel to, I don't know if you're familiar with the company, well, it's called Mozag, and Mozag is probably the largest mining company in the world, and they also have a lot of phosphate pits in some of the central Florida. We just delivered a unmanned surface vessel that we designed, engineered, manufactured, tested, probably saw it out here on the, been a lot of tests about it, and we just delivered that to Barto this week, and it was just, actually, we get paid for it tomorrow.
Okay, very good, all right.
We hope to be building a lot more.
All right, well then, let's move forward on this second amendment of the lease agreement, and.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both commissioners, thank you, and thank you, Mr. McCormick. So we're going to include the rent then at five hundred a month, beginning in one year, or when the track is complete, whichever comes first, three percent increase per year beginning next year. Do you have anything else, Mr. Hartman, I tried to take notes here while we were discussing, and then everything else would remain the same in your, your original proposal that you put forward?
And I will provide that, and we'll get the survey issue resolved as well, make sure we got that exhibit accurate.
Ms. Rita, she didn't get off work till six o'clock, and she, I think she had a quick question for Keisha or for you.
She was here during public comment.
No, she walked in right after, she didn't get off of work in time.
All right, can we go ahead and do this, yeah, get a motion on this, so.
Is it something for us or something for the board?
What's that?
A question?
I don't know, I seen her come in, you had discussed with me about her.
I mean, is it something she can meet with us?
I don't know, I just seen her come in and I know she wanted to talk, or she wouldn't be here.
All right, oh, let's see now, oh, I was thinking of Ms. Rita.
No, her neighbor.
Ms. Rita's neighbor.
Thank you very much.
All right, wait, we need to, do we need to vote?
Do you not need to vote?
Okay, all right, thank you, okay, thank you, then we're going to move forward, all right, so, Ms. Rita, did you want to come up here? Thank you. You wanted to speak during public comment, didn't get the opportunity, okay?
Yes, ma'am, but I didn't know, I just got off of work, and I had, I'm trying to put a mobile home on my property right around the corner on Thirteenth Street in Meridian.
Please use the microphone and introduce yourself for the record.
Okay, Rita Mathis, and I said I'm trying to put a mobile home out on Thirteenth Street and Meridian, and when I got off from work today, I had a message from the mobile home company, they had talked with Keisha about a permit, and he said they were told there's some kind of zoning change there, even though there's mobile homes everywhere, that it changed in two thousand and ten.
The zone's been there since nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
Basically, you need a special exception, you'll have to go before planning and zoning and before the board to get a special exception to put the mobile home there.
Okay, because that, all they told me, just that I needed to come to the city
Yeah, you just.
To put my mobile home there, but it's supposed to be here the fifteenth of this month, and like I said, I had no idea, because there are mobile homes everywhere.
There aren't, only one that are zoned.
Those have been rezoned, because the rest of the block is commercial, so.
Just your lots, the make lots that you own, but the only one.
So did y'all rezon them?
So you had to rezon. If I didn't, I didn't go in.
What year did you build your house in?
Eighty-six.
I don't know, but I thought you wanted to talk to.
I've never known, I, I've never signed anything to rezon them or known anything about them being rezoned.
Ms. Keisha, can we have a special planning and zoning, could you have a special meeting?
We can do whatever the board pleases.
Could we have a planning and zoning board even, I mean, a full board?
That's the thing, is getting everybody together, but she'll need to follow procedures just like anybody else would through a special exception, and that requires sending certified letters to all, any property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of your property, notifying them of the meeting, so the meeting would have to be included in your letter, you would have to bring the proof of your certified receipt where you sent it to every property owner, to the planning and zoning board, and, and then they would take their recommendation to the city. Now, I read through, and I didn't bring my notes with me back here, but I read through, and basically a special exception for a mobile home in a R1 zoned area, the only requirement is that I would have to meet the, basically what's in the neighborhood, so if there was, it is all mobile homes, so that's basically what it was designed for, so if you went to a neighborhood that was nothing but stick-built homes, you know, but.
It might have more difficulty.
More difficulty, but if you would just bring pictures of all the other surrounding mobile homes, I don't see a problem, it's just a procedural issue that, nobody, I knew you was putting a mobile home there, but nobody called to verify the zoning, so when he wanted the per, or the permit, that's where my job comes in, and I verified the zoning.
Right, see, I had no clue that you could put one there, because they're all around
And it didn't even occur to me, because there are, or I would have said something back in the beginning, you know, but when I did go to issue the permit, I did double check the zoning and.
And is there any way we could get this, well, planning and zoning board meeting, is there any way we can get this taken care of within the month?
Planning and zoning meets the third Thursday, but you would need to get your letters out, and about at least ten days' notice before we have a meeting, so I mean, you would have to, I mean, this guy, it'd be pushing it. We might could have a, a meeting by the end of this month, we've moved a planning and zoning meeting, because we haven't had one in over six months. We could schedule the meeting for later, and then you could get on the January commission meeting to get final approval.
Well, her, her house is coming in the next two weeks.
I'm just doing my job, y'all can do whatever y'all want, don't go over me, but as far as my job and books go.
Well, now our neighbors are here.
And like I said, I don't see you having a problem with it, it's basically getting the.
I had no clue, because there's mobile homes all around me, or I would have already
Said something. Right, and I would have too, I would have told you in the meeting, but I, it didn't even occur to me when I looked.
Because I'm like, there's all the tech, there's mobile homes.
But now, this is, I mean, it's not even on the agenda, now, you know, we're possibly going to discuss here a special exception, and, you know, I mean.
No, now, we've allowed them to come before the board, and just so they could get a feeling of it before they go through the whole process in the past, so that y'all go through the sense of sending the certified letters and, and stuff like that.
So you've got them in the commercial area on ninety-eight?
Right, yes. So if you want to, are you off tomorrow?
Yeah, I have a service in the morning.
Oh, okay.
I'm off some weekend, but.
Okay, I can get you all the property owners and addresses and stuff, and I'll go ahead and get you the letter, and you'll need to go ahead and send them out as soon as possible, and then we'll go from there to see about planning of, like I said, we can get it in this month, but the commission will have to meet on January to get a final approval.
Okay, so it'll be January before they can bring the mobile home, or?
Probably say January fifteenth. No, January, the first meeting in January for the commission, and it's whatever day it is after that, and, no, if we have a planning and zoning by the, at the end of this month, with the holidays, it's.
So now, Dan, what do we do if we can't get a board, can we just put it on the city commission? I mean, because I feel that we don't have a board.
Yeah, I just, I'm on the P and Z board, and I would love to hear and help you out, but I'm going to be gone probably from the fifteenth of the month through the end of December.
We only, we're down to only four members.
And this is, this is another, you know, we're getting way off track here, but, and in January, I had planned to address this P and Z issue, we need to get some P and Z members, so I'm just going ahead and telling y'all that, we need to get some members on the P and Z, and Will, go ahead and tell the agenda, yes, Mr. Hartman?
I'm Cliff Holcomb, and I live next door, and I find that I'll sign tonight. I mean, she's been living there.
We know where you are.
So I'm, I'll sign tonight.
I mean, the problem, we do need to determine if we have enough P and Z members, so we have, so we can have the P and Z meeting prior to the January meeting. I don't mean, gosh, the, the city commission has sat as the P and Z before, when we did not have a nominated group of P and Z members, the city commission is allowed to sit at both planning and zoning and then close that meeting out, run right into a city commission meeting, that's the old way it is done, but again, all these are matters that we need to take up and even.
I know, and we need to move forward, because this, you know, and I don't want to seem cold-hearted, this wasn't on the agenda, and we've got a lot of items on, on the agenda this evening, and we do need to move forward here. I mean, is there any way that the, that the, that the city commission can address this in our, at our first meeting, what day is that in January?
January seventh.
Okay, January seventh.
And we definitely can take up the special exception, but obviously ideally, it's been through P and Z and had made a recommendation, and the city commission can grant or deny it, grant it on January seventh, and we adjourn the business, but let me, I mean, the problem is that we can't get that P and Z meeting done in December, because we don't have enough people. I'd say, well, we could fill some of those vacancies, but we can't do that tonight either.
Until January.
Yeah.
How long have we had these vacancies on planning and zoning?
Well, one, one I haven't even got a notice from, but I kind of know that they're moving, so.
Yeah, I just moved this week out of town.
I never did get a notice, and we just, we haven't had the need for the planning and zoning board, and we've never, we didn't have a planning and zoning board until two thousand and six.
Okay, so we need to move forward now.
Right.
Okay.
Can you just get up with me tomorrow?
Yeah, if, like I said, I'm having service in the morning, I will get somebody to come by and take those up, and then just go from there. Okay, thank y'all.
All right, we'll see, we'll see what we can do for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to move forward now to new business, item number two, please, hello? We're going to have discussion of possible action concerning renaming Tallahassee Street, Highway sixty-seven to honor the late Mayor William Kerly Messer.
My uncle didn't get the time tonight, because they had an emergency at the prison, but it's not renaming, it's dedicating.
And this had come up earlier today, on renaming would cause, and would be a large, large process, and would involve changing addresses and that sort of thing, and I think obviously what Commissioner Mathis was talking about is simply dedicating is what we've done on parks and bridges and sections of road, I know we just, was it recently with a Cliff Melander on ninety-eight and that sort of thing, so, it really be, the term really should be dedicated.
Okay, I don't, I didn't put that rename on there, I don't know how that got there, but now, I, I would like to ask that the city attorney find out, can we dedicate a road, that's actually a county road, it's maintained from Highway ninety-eight out to, out to Liberty County, by the county, and can, can we, you know, I, I would like for you to contact the city, the county attorney to find out if there are any county issues involved with that, you know, does the county have to approve that? And, and maybe have it, and let us readdress this in January, let's have a public, advertise it, advertise it a couple of weeks in the newspaper that we're going to dedicate the, the highway, or considering dedicating or memorializing that roadway, strip of roadway, and is Mr. Messer, is he, Mr. Ray Messer, is he requesting just a signage place somewhere, one piece of, one sign?
Yes, I haven't talked to him.
So we need, you know, we kind of need to know these things, and now, and.
He was going to come, and they had us, something happened.
All right, and we do have, you know, the Messer Pavilion and Parking Plaza is, and we have set aside money to do a bronze plaque with the building of a little, Mr. Williams has said he's going to build something out here similar to what we have right in front of the building, but we're just trying to come up with some wording for that, any, you know, if anyone.
Yes, did you tell them?
Yes, so, and we also, I was reminded that we have Messer Field out of Kendrick Park, so we have, you know, and we want to make sure this is what, what we want to do, because once you do that, you're going to have, you know, your several items in, in honor of the late William Wilbur Messer, and, you know, we want to make sure this is the one we want, because it might be hard in the future to do something else, so we have other folks like Ms. Kat Steiner, or Charles Daniels, who's worked for the city for a long time, Charles Melander, so, you know, we just try to keep those things in mind. All right, so, can we put that on the agenda for, for next week? Commissioner Allen, is that open?
And I'll check with the county attorney.
Okay, so, all right, thank you very much, and do we need a motion to table that? Mr. Hartman?
Yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, and a second, please? Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Mathis, second by Commissioner Mathis, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, so, and we're going to advertise that in the newspaper, Ms. Keisha, for a couple of weeks that we're going to consider de-memorializing that roadway. Item two, discussion of possible action regarding the city personnel policy, this is, last month I put before the commissioners the personnel policy and asked them to review. Over the years that I've worked with it, I've discovered a few inconsistencies, and I wanted to bring those forward, so that we can make changes if they approve, and, and any other changes that they suggest, I'd like to try to work through this as quickly as possible, if it ends up that we have to, to table it for some of the suggestions until next month, that's fine too, but we're, we're, our meeting's running kind of long, and so we want to try to move as quickly as we can. Now, Ms. Courtney sent out some of the suggestions on, she's going to put, I've suggested an organizational chart, and she's going to put that right before the table of contents, I guess that would be probably the most appropriate place, and, and she put, gave you a copy of the organizational chart there, so does anyone have a problem with that? Okay, is that all right with you? To place that organizational chart in there, all right? Then the, the next one is under definitions, excuse me, yes, that's right, under definitions, meal and rest breaks are not described, and I put, I looked on the state of Florida labor law sites, and they describe meal and rest breaks like this, and I did discuss that we have some employees. rest breaks like this and I did discuss that we have some employees that work ten hours a day and I discussed, you know, rest breaks for those employees. So that's how we ended up in the afternoon with fifteen minute and a ten minute break to try to give everyone the same amount of two and a half hours a week of paid rest break. So, did you see, did you see that? Okay. Does, does anyone have a problem with adding that to, to the definitions? Did you see that, Commissioner Allen?
No, I was just, just wondering if it might be possible to have us all review that and then have any questions or bring it back rather than take the time of our people tonight to go through all these issues.
But it was sent out to you last week. And, and you haven't reviewed it yet?
No, well, I got it today.
So.
It's several pages and to go through that tonight, I think would be very asking a whole lot of our audience.
Do we need to have a workshop on this then?
Sorry, we can do, I mean, it's up to you all.
I don't know, I don't, I don't understand. I gave a month's notice and then, you know, I don't understand why it's not been reviewed yet, but anyway, let's, let's do this. I'm going to firmly give all these commissioners on this board a month's notice to review the personnel policy. If you have any problems with it next month, we're moving forward on it. All right, are you going to, are, are we going to review it?
I agree with that.
Now we're talking about the holidays are coming up and, and we've got two big holidays. You're going to have time to review it or are we going to make time to, to review these additions? There's several inconsistencies in here. We have inconsistencies regarding probationary periods, inconsistencies regarding how much money is reimbursed on, for, to employees that don't take the insurance benefit and, you know, it's, we, this needs to be addressed and, and by saying that you have, you know, been able to take the time or, or, you know, we, we need to, we need to do this. So can, can I get a, do we need to have a workshop for this? I, I really don't want to. We can move forward through it today.
I don't think we need a workshop.
Okay.
I don't think so.
And, and if you don't want to review it, then you will review it here quickly at the next meeting and, and we'll just work, work from it like that.
You've already been through it one time. You've already, you've already started taking notes. Why don't we go through it a little?
Well, uh, well, there's several items and, and Commissioner Allen has not, has not reviewed it yet.
I've reviewed it today and on the computer in the office. Our computer, our printer's been down and it's in yellow for things that are changed, but this one here before me, it's had no yellow in it.
It's highlighted, you just can't see the yellow. It's not printed in color. It is highlighted.
Is it highlighted?
So.
Well, I'd be glad to look at it and be prepared to discuss it next month if you're willing to put it off.
Do we need then to print out a, a personnel policy for each one of them with it highlighted and give them a note?
Yeah, it's highlighted, it's just kind of grayscale.
Okay.
But I have a yellow one if you.
Does it, well, he may need that to re, to review over the month.
We can print some more.
I'll, I'll volunteer, I'll make sure he gets the color printed highlighted version next month.
Joy, thank you.
Uh, he, he got one of these and I'll just run through this real quick, uh, right here. This is, this is not a change, this is just a, he, he got one of these here. Just an explanation. Out there in the real world, a lot of folks say the city employees are off so much, they're off so much. Are they, are they, are they on leave? Are they getting paid or they, what are they doing? How do they get, well, I want to just quickly hear review under our benefits policy, the leave. They, they have several leave type leaves, sick leave and the leave, holiday leave and, and from one to five years, is there, is there, what, is there something going on, Commissioner?
No, ma'am.
He's talking about his yellow highlight.
Did you have an extra copy of that, ma'am?
I got a copy now with the yellow, so I can, I can work right through this.
Okay, I, I can give you this, Courtney gave hers away, so. I just want you to see here now that the, the folks that work one to five years, if they take their sick leave, their total leave that they've earned by the end of the year is approximately one work month, one, one work month, almost two work months, one point nine work months or seven point seven work weeks. The employees that are employed five to ten years, they're, if they take their sick leave, all their total sick leave, their total work months that they're off for the year is about two and a half months or eight, eight point two work weeks. And the employees that are employed for ten, over ten years, ten years plus, their total leave, if they, if they use all their sick pay that they, they accumulate their sick credits, they're off two, two, and two point two five months, two months and a couple of days, basically forty-five workdays a year. So they can earn, they get bereavement, there's no number of occurrences defined, but they can get a half day to three days off per family member and family member's not defined either. They get, they can get leave without pay for schooling or military, family medical leave. They, they get the salary, supervisors, employees get comp time received at one and a half hours, comp time for each hour worked over forty hours in, in one work week. And they have, if they don't use their sick leave, it's accumulated for their entire employment and then they can cash that in at the termination, separation time.
No, no.
Of, of, yeah, one third amount of what they have accumulated if they haven't used it. So I just, you know, wanted to give you this to try to, you know, give you a simple explanation if, if folks address you and, and say they don't understand why they're, the employees are off. Once they, once they hit that ten-year mark, they begin to, to really accumulate some.
It's the same way the state does.
Yeah, so, and, and it's nothing out of the ordinary and sometimes we have to, if we, every three employees, we may have to hire an extra employee to cover for the folks while they're off. And so that's, that's the way business is, is operating and I just wanted to, you know, make sure everyone understood that. So then now, can I get a motion to table these, the personnel policies changes until next month?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so. I, Commissioner Allen's not prepared.
Okay, make a motion to go over it next month.
Okay.
Are we going to go over it and vote on it next month? And get it finished yet?
I, I would hope so. They're, they're, they're really simple, there's nothing real major.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for us to move it to next month.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Massie, can I get a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Walden, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. All right, then we need to, on item three, we need to appoint, appointment of members to the Community Action Task Force and this is for the CDBG grant application that Mr. Large mentioned earlier. It's, it's for, to the DEO, Department of Economic Opportunity, and it's just part of the grant criteria that we have a, a small task force board that meets up at one time only to approve a project that we're, that the grant writers have suggested that we put forth. It's for a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant and grants that are that high have a lot of criteria that come with them and one of them is to have citizens of care built that can't be part of the P and Z approve the project and they meet just one time. Sometimes it's just in the afternoon or something and with the grant writer, is that who they, they meet with, Mr. Fox?
And staff.
Okay.
Do we have anybody that wants to?
I believe Courtney and Keisha have, have contacted some of them.
We've got several. We've got a project in mind, we don't know that we'll even qualify for it. We're waiting on a meeting with the state this month. They're going to come down and look at it and tell us if it's qualified. So we kind of looked around the area and found people that live in that area and you got the five-member board, three of those members have to be low to moderate income and then the other two, it doesn't matter because they all have to live inside the city limits. So we've talked to Pastor Barbs, who said he would be willing to do it, Ms. Linda Stanfield and Joe Delgado. So we have the three. Two of those are low to mod income and one's above the low to mod income. So we're still looking for, oh, and we talked to Skip tonight and Skip said that he'd be willing to do it. So I'm just needing one more low to mod income. If anybody has any suggestions.
I think I might, but does anyone have a suggestion?
I'll go ahead.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Evelyn McAnally, I think she might fit the, the profile. Would you, would you call her?
I will.
Okay. So, do y'all know Ms. Evelyn? Uh, let's see, Skip? So that's Pastor Barbs and, and Joe Delgado, Lynn Stanfield, Skip Frank and Ms. Evelyn McAnally.
And then what we do is they just, we present them with several projects and they have to pick one out of the, out of several and then they bring it to the board and say, this is the one that they recommend. And they follow, all the projects come in different categories. You have a, a commercial category, a neighborhood category, what, another, an economic and a housing category. And Brenda met with the grant writer and it's very, they're very specific.
For three hours.
On what you can do and can't do and you said, you can't just come up with, it's not easy to come up with projects.
I believe it's seventy-one or seventy-three people have to low to moderate, moderate to low income.
If you do a neighborhood.
In the area, if you do neighborhood, they have to be in the area that, and benefit from it. And we, we really had a difficult time finding an area that would, that would qualify. It's, it's unbelievable that the criteria that goes with this grant, but we're, we're working on it. Mr. Large is working on it, Courtney and Mr. Fred Fox is the grant writer. They'll make administrative money off of it, so believe me, they're working on it. All right, so do we need to go ahead and choose these people tonight?
Yeah, but, but, um, Ms. McAnally, are we sure she's going to fit that?
Uh, no, we're not sure.
Is, I mean, is there somebody here that would fit the profile? We can give you the, because before you point them, we, we need to know for sure that that third person.
I can't understand why you'd do it. She likes to understand.
I mean. She'd have to fit in a category of. Skip, how many is in your household, two?
Right.
For example, thirty-two thousand three hundred and fifty is the threshold.
I, did you talk about family now?
Per year.
Well, mine is zero. I, I just clean the place. But Kathy is not going to fit thirty-two.
So he would be, he would be the above, above.
So we still need a low to mod, someone that is.
So what, what Ms. McAnally would have to be, she'd have to be below that. But there's two, there's two in the household.
Right, that would be good.
Do you need to prove it tonight?
Yes, we do. We're, we're, we're pushing them.
You want me to call?
You have to live within the city limits.
Want me to call her?
Can you delegate to the, to the clerk to, to make that decision for the, as long as they live within that area, meet the criteria?
I thought you said only three of them had to be low to moderate.
They did, three.
We're looking for the third.
So, and there's going to be five.
But right now I only have, I have two that are above the low moderate and two that are below it. I need one more low mod.
Brenda?
If you pick somebody and something.
Do you want me to call Evelyn?
Well, I suppose you could if she might actually.
I mean, who's going to explain what it is? I mean, that might take some time.
I can explain the word.
Do you want me to talk to her?
See if I can get her.
It's just one meeting. But I, I don't believe there's anyone in here that meets the criteria this month and we've mentioned you.
Hey, Evelyn. I'm at a city meeting and we want to ask you if you want to sit on, on a special meeting. I don't want to put Courtney, I mean, Keisha on to explain it to you. It's just one meeting and they need someone to, to do that. I think you'd like to put for it.
I miss Evelyn. Do you want to talk about what the project is?
Modern technology.
Can we discuss the project? We're just taking a brief recess here then, I suppose.
Can I, can I ask a question about the current Firdak grant? What were the things that the current?
Touch forward.
Tamara Allen, I just had a question about the current Firdak grant that we just got funded for and I know you mentioned an asphalt pathway around the park and are we going to be sure it's wheelchair accessible? So, okay, thank you. Okay, good. I just.
I don't believe they would allow us to do that if it was.
Well, that, that may be, but sometimes those things don't.
Okay, let's move forward then.
Would that put the mind that you'd be forced to the Iowa?
Is, is this Tamara eligible?
No, ma'am, I'm not, I'm not. Oh, I don't know, I don't think so.
Thirty-two thousand three, two hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty, thirty-two.
Household two.
I'm eligible, but I'm, would it be a conflict of interest?
No, why would it be?
Mr. Hartman?
Now, is this HGI or MHI?
Well, here comes Mr. Hocken, maybe, maybe he's eligible.
Is it any community?
Is this adjusted for? Is this adjusted for?
I need to find a job.
I don't qualify at all, two weeks.
Does, does Steve Allen qualify? Would Steve Allen?
No, ma'am, I'm in the same household as that woman right there.
Okay.
And I'm by myself and I don't need to check.
All right. We don't want you.
Yeah, for one person it's twenty-eight three, so it, it changes per people. So for three people in the household, it would be thirty-six thousand four hundred and it, and it goes up.
Ms. Preston?
And so we could have a one person making money less than the one.
Well, then we need to, we need to just, can, I don't know what to say. Can we, can we, is there any way that we can appoint four and make a motion to allow the one person who doesn't appoint, appoint?
Can we just make a motion to do these and then if you find somebody, then we can make a motion for the mayor to approve it?
I believe that would be viable.
Because we can do that.
I will, I will not appoint tonight and, and when you locate someone, then, you know.
I think that you, and that's the deal, and I think that you could do the ones that we have and you make a motion for the mayor to appoint someone that's eligible when she finds that person.
Based, okay, based on this criteria. All right, go ahead and make a motion with Commissioner Massie.
I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and these four will be fine and when y'all find some, when the city finds somebody else that meets the criteria, criteria, the mayor can approve it.
Okay, can I get a second on that motion, please? Okay, can I get a second on that motion, please?
Second.
All right, uh, motion by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Walden. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um, any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. And then do we need to, uh, appoint these individually or did we just appoint them at that, at this, at that time? In that motion?
He did say in that meeting that each commissioner appoints.
Okay, so we have Pastor Barbs, we have Mr. Joe Delgado, Mr. Linda Stan, Ms. Linda Stanfield and, uh, Mr. Skip Frank. Who would you like to appoint, Commissioner Walden?
Pa, Pastor Barbs?
Let me write it.
Uh, yes, I will.
Pastor Barbs, I'll make it easy.
Okay.
Yeah, he couldn't do it, Joe, that's his song.
Mr. Mathis, would you appoint Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Olivia, will you appoint Ms. Stanfield?
Of course.
Okay.
And Cal, will you appoint Skip?
Okay, all right, we have, we have four appointments and we'll wait our fifth appointment. Is there, is, is that, is that enough then?
That's all right.
Does that meet what y'all need? Okay, thank you. Uh, can I get, uh, then, uh, approval of the attorney's bills, please? Um, I need a motion to, okay, Mr. Cal's motion to approve the attorney's bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by, uh, Commissioner Mathis, um, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. Is there any other discussion, any other public discussion? Anyone other comments from the board members?
Are they gonna appoint somebody to the traffic committee? The traffic committee?
Traffic committee.
Traffic safety?
Are you giving that up?
You asked.
Traffic Safety Committee?
Well, you asked.
Oh, uh, that's not done through this board here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought that was, I misunderstood, I apologize.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, all right, uh, anything else then? We're adjourned.